Okay, it is one o'clock. I think we've got enough folks for a quorum. Believe we might be missing a couple of board members, but to respect everyone's time, we will go ahead and get started. Ms. Smith, let me know when you are ready to go. You're ready?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. It is Friday, February 21st, 2025, 1:00 p.m. We'll go ahead and call this special board meeting to order. Thanks, everyone, for joining. I hope you are staying warm and enjoying a great Friday. So as we do at every board meeting, we'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon. Welcome. Thanks for joining today, making time to be with us. Glad to have you. We've got a few things to cover today. I will ask if you are not speaking, if you could just stay muted, just so we reduce background noise, but feel free to jump in if you do have a question or have something you need to share, or you could raise your hand on the little raise your hand function on Google Meet. So with that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call? Smith is on the phone there. She must be trying to help someone connect. So give her just one moment.
I'm sorry, Ms. Page is having trouble logging in, but she is present. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark here.
Maxine Drew?
See, Ms. Drew, she was not, she wasn't able to hear me earlier today. Let me text her earlier in the meeting. If you want to continue on with roll call, Ms. Smith, I'll reach out to Ms.
Okay, thank you. Randy Lopez?
Randy, present.
Robert Allen Jr.?
I'm not hearing anything. I can't hear.
Hold on just a second, Ms. Drew. Wanda Brownlee Page is via phone. Rachel Russell?
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Nguyen here.
Thank you.
Wasn't paying attention. Did we have at least four members present, Ms. Smith?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. And hopefully, Ms. Drew can hear us soon. All right, is there a motion to approve today's special agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Dr. Nguyen. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, Ms. Drew, can you hear us now? All right, I see a thumbs up. Very good. Thank you.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Yes.
Robert Allen Jr., Wanda Brownlee Page, Rachel Russell, Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Have some technical issues he might be working through as well. So hopefully, we'll get it all figured out. We'll get everybody on and so that we can hear everyone. All right, thanks for approving the agenda board. We're going to jump right in to our board agenda. Item two is our budget discussion. We will continue on with our conversations around the budget board. You do have a presentation that was in your board docs, so hopefully you had a chance to review that. And Dr. Stubblefield, I believe, Mr. Lilly is going to help guide us through this document. So I'll pass it on to either you, Dr. Stubblefield, if there's anything you needed to add. Otherwise, Mr. Lilly, welcome and thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I will be passing it along to Mr. Lilly and Mr. Isnar. Just wanted to just kind of level set for what we were doing today. One, we were bringing, there was a request to bring the scenario of two mills if we were to exceed, but reduced by two mills. So we have that information in there. And then buildings are still working on their building needs assessments, and they'll finish those up. So we shared last time, we wouldn't have that at this particular meeting. The other information we provided was just where we are already looking at places for savings based off of the things that we would have to pay for that either were things that were paid for one-time money. We also have the information around board priorities. And then we also have just not recommendations. This is what these line items equate to in dollars, just so the board conceptually will have an idea if that's the direction that they go of what things equate to with dollars. So I will hand it off.
Good afternoon, everybody. Wanted to talk a little bit about the presentation, and then I'll turn it over to Brad. This is kind of a continuation of what we've discussed in the past. So some of these, some of these slides are things that we've gone over before. Tracy Kaiser is the one that prepared this, this presentation. She is unable to attend today, but Brad is going to lead us off, and I'll jump in with any, any input or insight as we go along as well. With that, I'll turn it over. And, and you know, one thing, we can talk, we can talk through the things that we've already gone through. We might do that, kind of expedite that, so we can concentrate on some of the new material in this as well.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Give me just a second to get the screen share set up here. I'll pull up that presentation. We'll kind of go through slide by slide together. All right. Hopefully, everyone can see that now. So moving into slide two, this is an update of the board priorities feedback that we got. So Wayne sent out a survey for all of you to help collect updated priorities. The last ones we had were from still in the COVID time period, honestly. So it was time to get those updated. The first slide here we have, and these are all just kind of broken into a few categories, but for safety and security, the top three that we-
Hey Brad, I apologize. I am going to step in here for a second because at the time Wayne ran this, I just want to make sure that, that we're totally forthright on this. There were five entries. Since that time, there has been one more sent in. So it is not in here. It was put in after this was built. So I do want to just clarify that.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. So at the top of these slides, you'll see the top three priorities. So these items were already existing in the survey and received the most votes, or as you probably remember from doing the survey, you were able to drag and drop to place a ranking order of the priorities. So the top three that we had from this higher additional security guards, continue to improve air quality, ongoing upgrades, and continue to upgrade HVAC systems for focus on older school buildings. The bottom items under the add, these are items that in the miscellaneous or other boxes that were available, just items that were added in. So these do not have multiple votes from additional board members. It's just the items that were added by individuals. So still worth considering that because they could have received additional votes if they were on there for all to see, but this is the first time that we're sharing sort of that, the total feedback that we got. So there, under safety and security, we've got better all, better overall facilities, improved police-student relationships, and continued community education efforts. Moving to slide three, under academic and curriculum, our top three existing priorities based on votes, up-to-date and relevant curriculum, providing summer school for all students, and expanding the Puma Plus program to summer school, enhancing post-high school success pathways, additional ads there, finding a way for parents to be engaged in the education of their children, less proximity classes, more opportunities for clubs during the school day, more academic enrichment programs, mentoring programs for students in and after-school tutoring programs, and I do not know what that was. Looks like a typo of some kind, so we'll get clarified on what that was supposed to be for the next presentation. Moving to slide four, staffing and workplace, top three priorities based on votes, provide professional development and workforce training, hire more teachers, and reduce class sizes, hire more mental health providers, additional add-ons, fewer proximity classrooms. So saw that on slide three as well. Build our own teacher administrator pipeline program, improved culture and climate, improved supports for BIPOC staff, commitment to improving culture and developing partnerships to create or to celebrate, retain, and attract both certified and classified staff. Under student support and enrichment, slide five, top three priorities, tutorials, services, after-school enrichment activities, at-risk services, and add-ons were improving school pride, student journalism opportunities, more opportunities for clubs during and after-school, student mentoring programs. Slide six, technology and infrastructure are top three based on votes, capital improvements in schools, state-of-the-art facilities, install reliable phone systems, need more technology, support innovative teaching and learning approaches, and miscellaneous add-ons were allow the community to rent the facilities mentioned for usage. Think we could get into more detail on that because that does exist, but we'll save that for now. Limit screen time for younger students, integrate the different programs and software that we use, teach families and students how to use the technology that we currently have. Under organizational improvements, the top two that we had from that, I think that was just because there were fewer options in this category, train frontline workers and customer service skills to improve community relations, have bid workshops to enhance the procurement process, and then add-ons, improve culture and climate for district at building levels. And last one of these results, slide eight, going into compensation and benefits, top three priorities by votes, professional development at all levels, market rate compensation for classified staff, and equitable pay scales across positions, provide tuition reimbursement for those without a bachelor's degree, and add-ons were teacher housing, and don't fall behind on compensation and benefits levels. Think about other creative ways to offer benefits. So before we change subjects a little bit, I would pause there to see if there are any questions. That was several slides in a row without a pause. So anything I can clarify there, we also have Wayne on, if there's any questions about the overall process of collecting this information, and if there's any discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Isnard. So again, just for clarity, that sounds like there was one more form that was completed that may not have been captured in the current slides. But if you could, if you all could just update that, if there are any significant changes or additions, and then just let us know. So that would be helpful. I see two folks with their hands up. First, Dr. Nguyen, and then we'll go to Ms. Russell. Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you. I'd just like to know what will be our process or procedure after we have more discussion and more data. If we decide to delete one of the priorities or one of the add-ons, how are we going to do that? And the reason for it, we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have staff, well, example, teaching, teacher housing, at this stage, I don't believe we're prepared to move in that direction. So not to have staff out looking for property or engaging some realtor. What's our process in, in perhaps deleting some of the items?
Well, I'll answer from my perspective, just as the one who's helping to produce some of these budget materials for you. We don't begin work on just feedback from one individual board member. We're letting you know what was collected at this point, and then welcome your discussion and your input as a board as a whole. So as far as what process you would like to follow next to help consolidate some of these into your total, you know, top items as a board of priorities, I would leave that to possibly your finance committee or President Lopez to help develop a process for you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for the question, Mr. Isnard. Thank you. And I would, Dr. Stubblefield, if you have anything to add on. I, I think that this is a good kind of first step, just for us to be able to see all the priorities that came through again from different board members that, that completed. I think it would be helpful for us to have continued conversations about what are those, maybe even top three, and have some agreement on, on what that looks like. I think there's ways that we can go about doing that. So Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lilly, I see you have your hand up. And Rachel, I'm not going to skip over you. I know you had a question. Just want to make sure we address the question Dr. Nguyen had around being able to define some of these a bit more.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and this is purely suggestion, you know, the board could, could manage this however they see fit. But I would think an appropriate way to address some of these new add-ins, that kind of stuff, would just be to take all of them and, you know, let Wayne compile those and resend it out and see how frequently they are on each board member's results and, you know, prioritize it based off of that. But again, that's merely a suggestion and, you know, not a, not a definite way to do it, but just one option.
And, and that, I was going to say the same thing, but I also think as we continue to have budget conversations, when we are making decisions, us and you knowing the top three, when there is a conflict, like if we're being asked to do something and we're saying this is the unintended impact, if you can go back to your priorities, it may help you collectively as a board to navigate and make some decisions. But I think Wayne sending it out, and then you re-ranking it, we'll say these are the overall top three or that kind of thing, that'll just help to narrow it as well.
I, I think that would help. I would be in agreement to, to kind of consolidate those into a JOT form and letting everybody vote again, for lack of a better term, on the priorities. And then I, I wonder if we could have those available before the rankings, before our next budget meeting on February, or March 7th, I believe is the next meeting, just for, for us to have eyes on again, or at least have ranked them by then. And if there's a discussion that needs to be had, maybe we can start at that March 7th board budget meeting. Ms. Russell?
I can have her ready by Monday.
Okay. Ms. Russell, you had your hand up. Okay. I know she had some technical issues a minute ago, so hopefully, we'll get those figured out. Any other questions so far on, on this? And does that sound, I mean, is there any, any board members opposed to Mr. Carell putting all of these priorities back into a JOT form and resetting those out to, to the full board for us to rank individually again, and having them ready for a review based on both?
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Lopez?
I like that idea as well.
Mr. Lopez? Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, but I would like to urge all the board members, when they get an opportunity, they need to start reading what's going on in Topeka. And it was a brutal week for us, especially for us in education and other things. And they're voting down everything known to man. So everything sounds good, but bottom line, it's going to come down to the money. And, and, and it, like I said, it was brutal. I would urge you all to go and go on the website and look at some of the bills that were passed and things that were done, because it checked the House and the Senate. It was brutal. That's all I can tell you.
Thanks. And Ms. Brownlee Page, absolutely. I think just on that note, on, at Thursday's board meeting, we'll have an update on from, I'm drawing a blank, Sean, Sean, right?
Correct. Sean will be giving an update on Thursday, as well as we have been sharing information out within the district for administrators and others.
Any other questions on, on this? It doesn't sound like there were any issues with the next steps on compiling the priorities, resetting those out, and then we'll have our eyes on them again to be able to have a deeper discussion if we need to. So if you have questions, send those to Dr. Stubblefield if they don't come up today. But it's not, Mr. Isnard or Mr. Lilly, if you want to continue on?
All right. Moving on to the next slide, so we're going to shift gears a little bit. We'll start talking about the, the dollars and cents. So just as a recap, the mill levy changes that we have already committed to as a district based on the board's process to the community for the bond election, we agreed to the 1.5 mil reduction to the library fund and a 1 mil reduction to capital outlay. So this is important just to note because any further, excuse me, or additional mill levy reductions would likely need to come from the supplemental general fund, also known as LOB or local option budget, just because there's only so far you can really take down that capital outlay fund based on the, the age of our buildings and continued renovation needs. So next slide, we are operating based on estimates. Right now, we will have the final numbers, which we don't expect will change much, but final numbers by the end of the school year. But we are anticipating approximately 6 million in additional state funding, so general fund or Fund Six, if you're familiar with our financial reports. Of that cost increase, we have identified approximately 6 million in funding that we would say is already committed based on mandatory needs that the district has. So I won't go through item by item in this, but this just is to give you kind of a visual of that, that base state aid increase that we're expecting is largely spoken for at this point. Now, obviously, if there are changes in the board's direction, we'll continue to change things on these slides as we go. But this is the most up-to-date information of what we had right now, as far as what is truly a priority for administration for next year.
There are- Mr. Isard, Isnard, and would you remind me again, what is the student activity licenses for elementary schools?
This is a proposal that we have been considering for the elementary student activity accounts. So this would give them a license for each location to have just the financials, management software to handle the receiving revenue, taking payments from students, making payments out of it. Right now, we have that all consolidated into the Business Plus system, so checks are cut out of central office here, which is not the same as how we handle it for the secondary level. I will be transparent on that one, that Mr. Lilly and I just had some conversation about that before this meeting, and that may no longer be a recommendation. I don't want to say for sure yes or no on that yet, but that's, that's just one that we are looking at that may come off that list.
Okay. And could you remind me what the digitizing records for the well-considered is?
Ms. Lilly, do you know on that one?
I, I can share. That is a one-time cost to digitize transcripts, historical transcripts. We often, on a regular basis, get requests. Most school districts, individuals can just go online and request it. This, the way we do it now, it causes a lot of frustration, and there are often, honestly, mistakes, because depending on the year, it's either microfiche or, it's just hard to find. So that's a one-time call so that we are not causing frustration and/or sharing not accurate information to alumni and students once they graduate.
Okay. Thank you.
Russell, I see your hand up.
Okay, I think I hmm, that's not going to work. Um, am I echoing on your side too?
Pretty bad, yeah.
Can you type your question?
I could. Or I can just exit the meeting on my computer. So a couple of things, and I appreciate your questions, Dr. Nguyen, on this slide, because some of these things are things we're seeing for the first time. But I also just wanted clarity. So for the faces positions, what does that entail? Because the other number was bigger, and this number is much smaller. So who, who does this extend to?
That would extend it to the elementary. You've already, we already have faces positions allocated at all the secondary schools. That was approved last year, or the ones that did not have it, we added them. Currently, at the elementary, they are paying for those positions out of title funds. So you can't mix it because of some, the planting. So if you were going to provide it, one for each elementary, that I believe is the total cost. If you decide to do a different model, either sharing or by size, that number would be reduced.
Okay. So I thought last budget cycle, we talked about tapering in the approach, and that was my understanding. And I thought, because some buildings, I thought we identified don't need like one whole person, or I thought we said like smaller buildings could share. I thought there was some type of thing we were working through, and then I thought we were also going to, for the buildings that are utilizing it, we were that utilize title. So you're saying in the initial implementation, those buildings can't keep that in title for one year and then transition? Because I thought that was what we talked about.
So the first- So the first iteration was that none of the secondary buildings were using title money. So we were able to add all of the middle schools and high schools that did not have them last year. We added those positions to those schools because none of them were using title money and it was supplanted. We didn't have a larger discussion um, as a board or um in this um, setting around um, looking at size, at least I can't recall. We didn't settle on anything and that's why the full cost is there. We can't phase it in at the elementary because if you use federal dollars, you can't pay for some of them with general dollars. It's either all or nothing unless unless you are supplanted.
Okay.
Say that, but yeah, so unless unless um, yeah, you can't, there's no way around it because if you are kind of, like if you said all schools will get a point five faces. If you have title money, you can then make it a 1.0 faces, but you still would have to pay for the point five in order to not supplant uh, when it comes to federal dollars. Ms. Walker, if I'm misspeaking, please correct me.
Okay, um, okay. I understand that. And if no one else has a concern with just putting the whole thing, like it's, I'm in support of this. I just wanna make sure that we're, that I, we all have a clear understanding of what it is. The, the police department, these items, and I wanna say almost two years ago, when we were going through this process and we, I think Dr. Wen, when we looked at the police department budget, I thought we budgeted these items previously inside of the department budget. So are these like extra costs or because we talked about uniform rotation, we talked about the vehicles? And I thought these items were budgeted two years ago over time to, cuz we also had a conversation about um, other um, police department, um, what have uh, inventory at that time as well. So is this not something that's in the budget or what is going on here?
I would probably leave um chief to speak to at least the dispatch system. I know the bulletproof vests, it's been explained to me that those are ones that are coming up or um, or have their expiration date has come up. Um, so while.
But is this not part of the inventory piece of the budget that we've annually budgeted for?
The vests are different from the uniform.
The uniform, I, yeah, but we talked about this from uh, a, and I'm not talking about the actual uniform, like I understand the uniform. But I thought when we talked about, and I'll have to go back through my end of the weeks. But I thought when we talked about this, like two years ago, we talked about how those things were put in the uniform column and not separated. Uh, and I can go searching, but I'm just also clarifying that we don't already, like, this isn't just a one time thing. This is something that's ongoing, that as they expire will need to happen. And that's what I thought the conversation was around when we talked about uniforms a couple of years ago, so.
I'll go back as well, Ms. Russell, and just see um, what information I have on that subject as far as communication. And i- it's hard to know um, kind of on the spot sometimes because while it may have been part of an early budget discussion, it may not have made it to a final draft um, or what was approved to. So um, let me get more information on that and get back to you.
Okay, and then um, lastly, is the, the last two items, so the transportation and the propio, will that always be an uh, an additional cost or that's an additional cost from something else that previously was there? Was this funded by something else and now we're having to cover these costs?
Yeah, and I don't, Brad, are you still sharing it maybe how I'm looking at it? Um, I, okay, um, I believe, so there are a couple of things um, that when we got our at risk audit back that we could not pay for at risk money, use at risk money for. So some of that, like last year or something, it may have been paid for out of like leftover S R funds. Um, so it may be a combination of that and increased cost for those services. I think it's a combination of both, but I'll confirm that.
Okay, and then lastly, the crossing guards, I thought we paid 190 just for this one semester. So would it not be doubled for a full year?
Uh, I, I'll go back and look, Rachel. I don't think it was 190 for the entire or for a semester. I think it's 190 for the entire year. Um, and that's based off of information that I've been given from the U G. The budget that they came up with and presented for the uh, 25, 26 school year was 190.
Okay. Yeah, and the ask to us when we got the M O U for contingency said 190 and so.
That was the total cost. We paid uh, close to a little over a hundred thousand, I think is what we ended up paying, Ms. Russell. But in the, there, they had the cost for the year and we were billed for the second half because they paid the first half out of their last year's budget. So I think that's where you saw the number, but we only paid for. I think it was just a little over a hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Rachel, I did have, do you mind if I go back to the vests and dispatch system real quick? Um, you know, Brad's right, if, if it might have been in discussion and may not have made it, you know, we'll have to go back and look at that. But the bulletproof vest and dispatch system, we have gone out to uh, to go after grants for that in the past. And we've been unsuccessful in obtaining these items through grants as well. So we, we've explored other funding options and that's what I'm aware of. But we'll go back and look at, at original budget too.
Okay, that's fine. Um, and then I just wanna, and I'm sorry to go back, but I was having sound issues. But if I go back to the board priorities, um, I'm also in agreement with the list. I think the one caveat that I wanted to say um, is I would like to be able to on a scale of like ability to say, hey, we're gonna have these five board priorities that we're gonna prioritize in our budget decisions. I think the like ability to also grade whether or not these are feasible or tangible things that we can do, like um, I think utilizing uh, the teacher housing piece, like if that's not something that's feasible in the next year to do, like that would be a red item or like there's a yellow where like it's something where we could do, couldn't do, or there's a green, like, oh, this is a hundred percent. Cuz what I would hate for us to do was just go back and blind prioritize and then we get to five, three or five items and then we're not able to like do what, things that might be high priority, I also might not be something reasonably possible right now. Um, which I think goes back to both Ms. Page's comments, but also just like um, there's a lot of things we wanna accomplish between all of these lists, but I don't know that we will be able to do all of them. And so just trying to put some, something else behind the priorities that helps us like kind of like SMART goals, like we can prioritize something, but if it's not a, like if it's not reachable, then that will be, like, then we'll feel like we didn't address any of our priorities. So that was just what I wanted to say about the priority setting piece. Thank you.
We can certainly look at um, how we could give you some of that feedback on them. I think right now it was just uh, the first goal to get everyone sort of brainstorming of ideas. And then I think through this um, second look that you'll get where you can rate also the ones that were added in new. Um, that will help. And then we can talk internally about how it might be best for us to give some sort of a staff um, rating or recommendation per item as well, so.
So I hear you, but I also think um, these two things go hand in hand because I also heard you all ask us to make a decision or like to get to consensus about something by March 7th. And so for me, and I've said it the last meeting, it's hard to make decisions without having all of the information. And so if we're saying our board priority is this, but yet we're saying we're either gonna lower or reduce something and then that means we don't have the money to do something, then that's concerning to me. And so I guess, I don't know, maybe it's, and I hear you and I'm trying to think on the spot, like maybe it's you do the survey and then the top 10 things you tell us the feasibility of being able to do them. Um, but I really just want us to have something more concrete because our board priorities mean nothing if we make a decision about the mill or what we're gonna cut or what we're gonna do without actually having the priorities solidified. So that's just my interpretation or my um, feedback, so.
All right. Thank you. If there's no further questions, at this time I can move on.
My, right, um, just to circle back and to build on what Ms. Russell said. First thing, we, the board, we have to keep in mind and, and the staff already knows that. We deal with one year budgets. That's the only thing we can, can commit to. Um, but secondly, the um, that's what I was asking about the priorities. We don't want our staff to spend time if, if it's not um, logically possible within this one year. So I like that idea of, of um, I don't know if you wanna call it color coding or really prioritizing the priorities. And then number three, could you refresh my memory? Because if you go back to the last um, s- slide about the commitments, clearly the health insurance, you have that as a, as a fixed, not, not a fixed cost, but a fixed expenditure that they'll tell you what the, the price is. Help me remember how the, um, just like I asked with the licenses, how did these, how did these commitments? How, how do we get these commitments at this point? Just help me remember that, please.
So looking at the list, um, like the cybersecurity, T I S, my screen has been weird. That, you paid for that out of contingency last year. Um, some, some of the others were items that as staff uh, have come to share about functionality and things that we need to have unless it's going to disrupt service. Um, those are the other things that are on the list. So that's how those things got on there. So that's, I think Mr. Isner says, some of these are, it's the first time you're seeing it. We are saying this is what we, we being administration and staff are saying that are important. If you decide it's not important, then it won't be on the list and we'll adapt and adjust accordingly.
Or it will be on a list, but it won't come out of these funds.
It, well, and you're correct. And by saying that, it may not come out of these funds, it just will be on top of uh, any additional adjustments. Cuz we're gonna have to make adjustments with this list because one of the things that has not been discussed is negotiation. So internally, outside of the new funds, you're still gonna have to talk to, uh, talk about negotiations and what happens there. And that's as far as we can go. So this is just saying, before we even get to that, here are things that are a priority in some manner. Some of them we, you know, we have to do, like the health insurance and that kind of thing. But from there, if you're like, this is not making it, this is not making it. And I think, Ms. Russell, to your point, that's how sometimes these things get on the list, decisions are made. And even though they're on the list, they don't happen because in the end, the final list may look very different. This is just, here's where we are right now and here's what staff would say is a priority based off of um, the things that, to help us to function and be more efficient.
Like general, general operating procedures, general operating issues. And there may be, but just as you mentioned, there may, there will be a list of sta- of salaries. There will be maybe another list. So this is, we're at the beginning, very beginning. So thank you.
Right, I think that's kind of the, the biggest point of the story we're trying to tell with this slide is just that of that 6 million in new, just general base state aid that we've got, we've got a number of needs that are going to take the majority of that. There are still other items like salary increases to consider. So those would be things that we'll be thinking about internally where we can cut to cover those additional things already. So thank you for the questions about that. All right, I will defer some to Dr. Stubblefield on this slide as well. But this was included to give you a very high level look at some of the first numbers we've got on some of the, the changes to the organizational chart. So um, we are anticipating some savings from not filling district level vacant positions. Uh, that you can see there about 1.46 million. Um, there has been an additional uh, district administrator uh, position reduction and a classified staff member. Um, so again, these are just uh, very round numbers to give you high level because some of these uh, changes are still in the process. Uh, but Dr. Stubblefield, did you want to elaborate any further?
Yeah, you'll get an updated org chart today at the executive director level and above in the end of the week. But on, it's, it's, it's not, it's district level positions um, that either were open this year and or as we look and forecast to streamline for next year that we're not planning to fill. So with that, that's where that uh, approximate amount comes from. There are still some moving parts and um, we're working with departments um, around that as different positions have become open. But that is um, where we are currently. I see Dr. Wen's hand.
Right, does this figure just salary or is it salary and benefits? What is that, what are those figures?
It's salary and bene- it's salary and benefits. It is what it costs for that position um, totally. That's how we figure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next slide, this is one that you have seen before, but just as a refresher on it. Um, just explaining the budget impact of one mil in the supplemental general fund reduction, also known as L O B. Um, so one thing that's unique um, about a mil for us is that because of the state aid that we get um, as part of our budget, it's a, one mil is not one mil between different organizations, taxing entities within the county. Um, it's a little bit different for us. It impacts us quite a bit more because if we reduce the um, one mil, the local taxpayer dollars, which would be about 1.3 million locally, the state aid that we lose on that is approximately 2.9 million. So we get to that 4.2 million total per mil. So that just um, explains that because we start to see that 4.2 million quite a bit in the upcoming slides here. Um, so that's how we get to those numbers. Local tax by home value for one mil, just again, a reminder, in USD 500 service area, our median home value um, as of last appraisal year was approximately 116,000. So we would be a little bit over um, the second category at the top of this here then. Um, how that one mil is calculated into dollars for the homeowner, we take the home appraisal value. So what your market value, um, if it was put on the market for sale would be times um, point 115 or 11.5%. That gets us the assessed value of the home. From there, one mil is $1 per year, per thousand in assessed valuation. So that hundred thousand dollar home at an assessed value, uh, bringing it to 11,500 gets us $11.50 per year or 96 cents per month. We can then take that down further to see on the high end of homes within our service area. Um, being 300,000, you'd be about. being 300,000, you'd be about 34.50 per year, or $2.88 per month. That gets us to the scenarios. So scenario 1, scenario 2, and scenario 4 are returning from our last presentation. New for this presentation is scenario 3. We were asked to just show what a 2 mil reduction would look like. So to start back at scenario 1, though, revenue neutral, so we would only receive the base state aid increase, the 6 million that we talked about at the beginning. This would be, we'll leave essentially on the table, then up to 14.4 million, staying revenue neutral. Again, 68.6% of that would be the state aid portion, and 31.4% local taxes. So just quick math on that, and I apologize for not already having that ready for you, but of the 14.4 million, the 31%, so to save approximately 4.4 million for the local taxpayer, it would have that 14.4 million total budget impact. For scenario 2, the 1 mil reduction, so we are, in that scenario, it would be exceeding revenue neutral, but reducing by 1 mil, would be a total budget impact of 4.2 million. Again, the same ratio of state aid to local taxes in play there. Scenario 3, the 2 mil reduction that was requested of us, that is essentially doubling scenario 2. And scenario 4 would be keeping the mill levy flat to what it was last year with our changes, we know from the bond election. But overall, keeping the mill rate flat would keep, would give us that additional revenue that's mentioned in scenario 1 that would be lost, so. We are doing these estimates when it comes to valuations right now. Just a reminder, based on Wichita State's study on Wyandotte County real estate increases over the past 12 months, their study showed approximately 6% increase this year. We have nothing from the appraiser's office in Wyandotte County saying that that's what they're seeing, yet that study is the closest that we have. So just wanted to clarify that for transparency, that we are using a study for those numbers.
So Brad, help me understand again, please.
Sure.
What did you, okay, with scenario 1, revenue neutral, you would, did you say that was the same as scenario 3?
No, scenario 2 and 3 are similar, just 1 mil and 2 mil reductions. So you see the total funding impact doubling. Scenario 1 is truly revenue neutral, that would be using the exact number of dollars collected in this fiscal year for next year, so no increase whatsoever. We just have to keep in mind how much of our percentage of revenue in that LOB is state money versus the actual local taxes, so. Scenario 4 is just keeping the mill rate flat. So you would have the same mill rate applied to a higher valuation.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking, you made, on your slide, you corrected this slide, didn't you? Because you have, the slide you sent out before has 1, 2, 3, and 3. That was a mistake I made.
That was a typo we corrected earlier today.
Okay, okay, so I, I need to close that out, because then that's, that's an incorrect slide. Okay. So that, if you, now help me again, scenario 1 and 4, I'm sorry, I was looking at 3.
Scenario 1 is revenue neutral, so that's-
Okay, I got that, I'm sorry. Scenario 4.
Scenario 4 would be keeping the same mill levy rate, but on the higher valuation, we assume will come in higher anyway, from the county appraiser's office, which we were estimating right now internally at 6%. That will change when the final numbers come out. But that would be keeping the same mill rate that you approved for this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was important. Now, help me understand then, the, if you keep the same mill levy, and you keep the same revenue neutral, what's the difference in, do you know those numbers of funding decline? Can you estimate?
Can you repeat your question one more time, I'm sorry.
Okay. Revenue neutral means keep it, does that mean keeping the mill levy the same?
Revenue neutral would be, would mean keeping the end dollar amount collected the same. So it would require you to reduce your mill levy by the exact amount necessary to offset valuation increases.
Okay. Now, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure if the public understands what you're saying. So say it again in common language. You're keeping the same amount that you collected. So you're using two different terms, actually. So to keep the same amount collected, you're saying you would have to reduce the mill levy?
So if you were to have the end valuations come in higher, which again, we're assuming 6% right now, that will change, then you would have to roughly reduce your mill rate by that same percentage in order to keep the end dollars collected the same.
Okay.
The only thing that I would add to that is that while that may be true for a taxing entity like the UG, where that is their, their end budget impact, it's, those dollars are what is left off the table. For us, because 68.6% is the state aid, and only 31% of that is the local taxes, we lose quite a bit more than any other taxing entity would per mil that we would reduce. So it's just important that we remember that.
Right. The impact is greater.
Correct.
That, that it goes further than just the amount of money being collected. Correct? Would you agree?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So, but with, with that then in mind, because state aid is tied to, we, do, when you say you're estimating at 6%, do we know at this time what the assessed valuation percentage would be for the county?
No, ma'am. That's why we're using that estimate, which came from Wichita State's real estate study. We, we will not have, typically, the county appraiser's office reaches out to the taxing entities and tries to set up some sort of a meeting with you to give you early estimates later in the spring. So more like May to June is when we typically get that call. So it's, it's just too early for them. They're still doing the work to get there at this stage.
Well, on that last slide, that you had assessed value at 11.5, where'd you get that number from?
The assessed valuation, 11.5%, that's in state statute, so that is, it, it's an arbitrary number that the statute creates. It says that your assessed value will be 11.5% of your home's market value.
And is that what currently it is in Wyandotte County?
That's what it is statewide.
Okay, got you. Alright. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions before I move forward? Alright. This just recaps sort of what we saw in a few of the previous slides, what those hypothetical options would mean to us. And it's not to be scary, that, it's just to show you what we would start working on as soon as one of these options is shown to be a frontrunner by the board. We've got to start working out our budget planning to include how we would get to those reduction numbers. So we also included, because we've received some questions about this, what the dollar amount roughly would be for different class size increases, if we need to touch staffing as a part of these reductions. So to increase class size by 3 students, or the student-teacher ratio by 3, would reduce the need for 103 teaching positions. So that's about 6.7 million in salary and benefits. And then you can see what that impact would be for a reduct, or an increase to the ratio of 2 and 1 students as well there. So I, I think it's, this is just put there again, because we've had that question asked, but also kind of to get people's minds thinking a little bit about, as we talk about our budgets, both general fund and local option budget, being approximately 85% salaries, 15% stuff, I'll say, that leaves only that 15% that we can really touch easily without impacting people. And when we're talking about the cost of 1 mil, or 2 mils, or revenue neutral, it quickly becomes less and less likely that you could reduce in the non-staff positions enough to cover those reductions of that size. So we've got some more data that we're working on to give you some hypotheticals about how it might affect the overall budget and staffing specifically, that I don't quite have prepared yet for this meeting. But we will get those out to you as soon as they're available.
And the only thing that I will add, Brad, is, again, these are not recommendations. I'll say it over and over, but it's really to put a dollar amount. And it's not, I think they're mostly like certified side positions, because, Ms. Russell, that was my point, like, if, if, if we're gonna do something like that, you do have a shorter timeline, just because of contracts and those kind of things. So, no, I, you don't have to make a decision by March 7th, but you couldn't creep past, like, late March, early April at the latest, because then you run out of options, and the only staff that are not under, continue, that are not protected under continued contract laws would be classified staff, and we don't have a lot of room there either. When you think about how we operate, there is, there are some. There may be some opportunities, but you just have to look at it collectively. You lose flexibility around staffing the further you go out. These are not our recommendations, it's just to show you what those things dollar-wise equate to, and how you possibly could get to any of those amounts that is from revenue neutral or reducing the mills, so that you have all of the information.
So the next slide, and actually the last slide before we get to questions, is- Sorry, Ms. Russell had her hand up, I just wanted to acknowledge, in case she wanted to share, sorry about that.
I thought we were at the end slide, but go ahead.
Sorry, Ms. Russell, the hand raising is off on the far right of my screen here, I didn't see you. The, this is just in response to a question that administration received, and it is not a recommendation whatsoever at this point. We are just providing some initial numbers of what a elementary school closure, or combining 2 buildings, would net us in a possible maximum cost reduction. There was a change to this, it came in on the first slide really high, but that's been corrected now. It would be about 2.3 million. So I, I don't have any other context about who maybe asked that question, or if there was any follow-ups to it. Just, this is what we were asked to put together, so. Hopefully that answers whoever's question that was. And I'm going to stop sharing that slide deck, and then show you just what we were talking about, since we got on the subject of the 85% and 15% split of our budgets. I wanted to show something that I put together right before this meeting, just for Mr. Lilly and I's use, but might help clear up some questions for you as well. So this shows us final expenses or totals for general and supplemental general fund for the 23-24 school year. So we used our final audited expenses from last year. And then what the 15% of non-salary expenses portion of those budgets is. Gets us to, out of just those 2 funds, about 243 million, 36.4 million of that is that 15% non-salary. If we did scenario 1, revenue neutral, we would be looking at reductions to get back to, we'd be looking at reductions that would be approximately 39.5% of that non-salary expense. And then we can see scenario 2 and 3, the 1 and 2 mils, we're looking at 11.5% or 23%. So this just, we added to our thinking a little bit, because we started with, last year, we agreed to as administration, and then with the board's direction, to do 3% reduction to non-salary expenses as much across the board as possible. Unfortunately, in some departments with budgets that were too small already, that wasn't possible. Others then had to make up for that difference. But the 3% was difficult, but doable. We would be looking at significantly more work to get to those numbers for this next fiscal year to do additional reductions. So we just wanted to show you kind of what that means in a percentage model. Any questions on that? And if not, that concludes my presentation.
And while you're asking, thinking about your questions, and, so we can make sure to get it, we, the, to just add on to what Brad said regarding that amount, last year, we had to, we didn't fill some open positions to get to the 3%. So when you see 39, 23, and those kind of things, it's difficult to get to that percent without it structurally changing some things. And then some departments do not have that amount, and in some ways, we wouldn't be able to operate. Like, it, it's just saying, well, yeah, you can do it, but there are unintended consequences, and we don't necessarily know all of those consequences. We were just showing you some, the, how far we would have to go. And we, last year, struggled with the 3% when it was just operation. So we just wanted to be transparent about that portion.
Ms. Russell?
Thank you. So, I don't know who asked the question, but I appreciate it. I will also say that the slide decks that's on Board Docs must be really outdated, because many, that, that $9 million elementary school closure is what I also see on mine. But, and so I'm kind of backtracking my thought question a little bit, but not all the way. And so the board has received a lot of, of presentations, plans, opportunities. And I want to draw everyone back to the facility master plan data collection point. And my argument, or my kind of, going to go in a very sensitive, but also understandable- but also understandable assessment or just like, I guess, just wanna get feedback from the board. Initially, I had looked at the elementary school closures, the information provided, given the nine million, the cost value point as one, as a potential direction or directive that the board could give to the administration to look at. A, a potential to, and I don't say this lightly, but I also want to go back to the study, the facility study that showed many of our buildings either aren't at sufficient utilization and/or on the scale of future ready learning environments. There are multiples that were ranked below even average. And so I would be interested in the board having a discussion around school closures for a multitude of reasons. One being financial, but the other being around optimal learning experiences for students and how that correlates to our vision of every child being able to have world-class experiences. And I know school closures are a tough conversation. But going back to what Ms. Page said earlier, given the times and given our continued needs as well as just all of the things around ensuring safety, quality, that folks aren't having variances of experiences within all of our building, but then just recognizing that some of our buildings are just not optimal for learning anymore. And so I, I think I need to go back and explore the number that I think, or I was going to suggest that we explore or even the specifics, but just wanting to have that discussion as a board. And I know these aren't recommendations, but unfortunately I also hate to be the one to rip the Band-Aid off, but based on the direction we went last year and also where we are today with our ongoing list of needs. Like there is no way that we can make any decision that won't impact people at this point. And I know that feels uncomfortable too, but I also, we're, we're gonna have to get to some place. And so I will not ramble anymore, but that's kind of where my thought process is. Is how do we take all of these plans, all of the information, both academic, facilities, budgetary and make some decisions, so.
Did you give me permission to speak?
Yeah, yes, Dr. Win, go ahead.
And, and Ms. Russell, I totally agree with you. Yet in a hour and a half, we can't make informed decisions. And, and in the past, we have had all day Saturdays to just lay it all out and actually do some in-depth brainstorming and, and decision-making. So I would agree with you, but we have to really devote quality time with data, with commitment, and then make those decisions because these are lasting decisions. Yet budget for one year, but they're still lasting decisions and they have great impact. So I'm, I'm in agreement with you with a different, perhaps refined activity. I don't know if you are on that page, but we're on similar pages. So thank you.
Mr. Lopez, if I can. Thank you. I'm on the same page of just making sure that we are doing the right thing. And as Ms. Russell was speaking and, and my mind went back to Missouri and the discussion of like school closings and things like that. If that is even something that we would put on the table, I, because it's out there in the universe at this point, I would want to make sure that the community was brought in like from the beginning of do you even want us to look at that as even an option? So that's the only thing that I would say to that. I, I do understand the amount of energy and dollars that it takes to keep a lot of our old buildings running. And it outweighs, in a lot of instances, it definitely outweighs keeping them open, open or not making the repairs. So I, I get that part of it. I just wanted to be sure that, I mean, that's my thought.
No, and I appreciate you bringing that. And I think the other caveat or the other thing I think about is that we also have a community that's telling us that they want reductions. And so like, it's the weighing of those two things. Like we have been trying to carry all of the weight for so long by having all of these buildings trying to keep everyone central or like in their neighborhood. And at this point, we're really struggling. But I a hundred percent agree, like the community has to be bought in and understand like, hey, if this is their direction, if this is where you want us to go financially, then we also have to, like, we've reached the part where we no longer have things that we can cut. Like we have to cut buildings and we have to cut people. So a hundred percent agree with you though, Ms. Clark.
And I, I think to Dr. Win's point and to Rachel and Ms. Clark's, those like, it's not gonna be made an hour and a half. And if that is something like, I'm just gonna bring us back to like, how schools function and how their contracts, their other components. Those discussions, you don't want to rush them, but you also are on a tight timeline if you're talking about school closures and those kind of things. So which is why I wasn't trying to rush the board, but that, it's kind of backwards that you don't make an official vote about whether you're gonna exceed revenue neutral or not until August, because you're backed into a corner at that point. So where we are now, like, I don't know if you talk about this year's budget and then talk about long-term where you're trying to go, but there are just some things like we, we believe we know what we're getting from the state. Yet we are, there's a lot of uncertainties around what will happen federally, which as a district, we get, I believe, a little over 50 million in federal dollars. And we're, I mean, the first information that we got today was we'll be looking at a one to 2% reduction if all things were taken in consideration today. But if that changes, we have to adapt because that's tied to people and programming as well. So it's two things happening and one of them, we kind of have an idea. And the other one, we believe we have an idea, but there have been lots of things that have come out that we're all trying to unpack and make sure that we understand and know the impact. And honestly, we have no control over that. So we're just sitting back and waiting on information, but it's very complex. I know we have another hour and a half on March 7th, but if there's gonna be a larger discussion, we may need to do a doodle calendar for the board to have a longer time once you have all the information that we have right now. So that it's not in just this small chunk.
Go ahead, Ms. Russell.
Dr. Stubblefield or anyone else, in your experience, and I know you've been in multiple districts and I'm not trying to say this is the, the direction we have to go. I want to be clear that I do, going back to Ms. Clark's point, wanna make sure that the community and educators are a part of those conversations. What has been like the time? How much time would you estimate is needed to like have that camp, that campaign or PR discussion around potential school closures or getting the pulse from community around those things? Because I think understanding that, and I don't mean to put the pressure on you, understanding that will help me think about like if this is actually a conversation that we can have headed into this one budget year.
Honestly, I, I've lived through it in some previous districts, the most effective. You know, Lee Summit was talking about this and they started last fall. That gives people time. You look at it and they were talking about it for this year. But you know, I've been in a district where financially, when they, you know, when we went to block grants, some changes had to make and you just have to respond. That's not ideal, but you probably would want to start the fall before so that you have an opportunity to get stakeholder input, to talk through like the transportation, where kids will go and those kinds of things. Some districts have done it. One district, they did it. They looked at the students in the gray levels and they did it over multiple years. So if you were in fifth grade, if you were in third grade, you knew you were gonna finish fifth grade there and they started to send kids like, the kindergarten class won't come, the first grade or K1 or those kind of things. So there are lots of options, but I would recommend, if you're gonna do something like this, if that's the direction, you don't do it in haste and you start the fall before because you need to look at boundaries, buses and the feeder patterns and all of those things. And this time of year where there are lots of moving pieces, you can make some decisions and have some great unintended consequences that you're trying to unpack.
There, there are also gonna be some legal requirements that you guys would have to comply with if you decide you're gonna go a school closure route and those take time.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Brown, the page, go ahead.
I would agree with Ms. Clark and Dr. Win and, and, and Ms. Russell. I, I didn't think this would be something we'd be rushing trying to do in one year. I don't think that's being realistic, that we need to have some short-term and some long-term goals and work everything out, because it's gonna take some time.
Thank you. Additional comments or thoughts? And, and again, I think, I, I just want to make sure level setting, right? I don't think there's any, again, any recommendations necessarily today or I, I think folks are throwing out ideas. I think we're, you know, looking at this one budget year or next, next year's the one budget year. But I think we're throwing, talking about options that, that we could look at if we are going to reduce a mil or two or revenue neutral or if we're exceeding, I think all those options are still on the table. There's no, necessarily no recommendation coming from staff. So I, I agree, I don't think we need to, I think we need to or should rush the conversation. There's a lot of implications, whichever direction we go, that we've got to give some thought to. Mr. Mylan.
Yeah, my thought sort of has been very, pretty much already said. Let us not be too expedient in this because it's gonna be affect us, us, and I say us, the district, a long time. And I know we, there are deadlines to be met, but just my opinion, go as far as we can go, as close as we can go to the deadline to see, you know, that's what deadlines are for. After that, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's over with basically. So just to, and, and Ms. Clark says something very profound and very important with the community involvement and let them know and keep them abreast, get their feedback. But I'm, I'm in compliance, much has been said, but it's not, nothing like this should be rushed. So that's my, that's my take on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Again, level, level setting, I think to your point, to everyone's point about community input is very helpful for all of us. No one is suggesting that we are gonna close any schools right now. I think, I just want to make sure folks don't think, walk away thinking that's what we're saying we're doing. Ms. Russell, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think I was just gonna add to move the conversation forward about next steps regarding this budget year. But I, I think what I heard, and I appreciate your response, Dr. Stubblefield, is I think we have to figure out a solution for this year, but I would strongly encourage us to add this conversation more in depth than what some, going back to what Dr. Win said, maybe at our fall board retreat to have an earlier conversation and just to look at boundaries, numbers, all of that. Not necessarily for the upcoming school year, but to add that to the fall board retreat for discussion. Thank you.
Russell, Ms. Drew, I see your hand up.
No, I was just going to say, I'm in agreement with what I've heard everyone say. I think it's necessary for us to begin to put everything into place to make sure that we cover our bases on everything. So I'm in full support.
I do want to be respectful of everyone's time. I see we have about five minutes before we hit our hour and a half mark. And, and again, I, I agree, I think as we're moving through this budget process, we don't want to rush to any decision points or I don't want folks to feel rushed. We do have a meeting on, on March 7th for a next, a follow-up for our budget meeting. A couple of action items that I heard from this meeting, Mr. Correll and his team or Dr. Stubblefield will put together those board priorities that were received, including the, the one, the latest one that was received that was not reflected in the slides today. And that will be shared with the board. So board, please be on the lookout from an email from Mr. Correll or somebody from the team. And please complete the, your priorities list, can rank those so that we can see them by that March 7th meeting, I believe. And I think Mr. Isnard and his team are also going to work to identify realistic, you know, what's realistic, what's not, what's feasible, what's not, based on those priorities. So we might tweak our timeline a bit if we want to see. Mr. Isnard, Dr. Stubblefield, maybe you can talk internally about how we get all that information. Cause also to Ms. Russell's point, we want to make sure we folks have all the information that they can to be best informed and, and do your rankings. So if we can kind of talk through and figure out how to do that. I, I, I like the idea, Dr. Stubblefield, of maybe sending out a, a doodle to see if there's a date that we might be able to, to find for us to, to have a longer conversation, to really go in, in some depth. Maybe at that March 7th meeting, we can have some dates identified to, to move forward with. And then to Ms. Russell's point, I think, kind of put on our, on the side, make sure we tag that for the fall retreat, having a conversation about some of those future years and facilities and boundaries and what, what that might look like. So trying to make sure I caught most of what was captured or what was said today, Dr. Stubblefield. Anything else?
No, and what we'll provide at the next meeting is just, Ms. Russell, we can provide some faces options because you can produce it. We'll give an update on those items that we said we were gonna check on that there were questions around. And I'll look at the, we'll look at the, I'll look at my calendar and send some possible dates out for a longer session. Just wanted to remind everybody, March 11th is the listening and learning session. And we do have Kellen Adams, who works with KSB to do school and budget one-on-one. So he can share with the community like what these terms mean in layman's term. And that will be an opportunity where we also can get, not necessarily on these specific items, just get information, feedback from the general community. So we can talk about what that looks like because that's the next listening and learning. And we're dedicating the time for that one to budget. I do have to jump off, but I'm sure staff will give me any information that I might be missing.
Well, Dr. Stubblefield, before you leave, on your Google Doc, please include some Saturdays. So thank you.
Okay.
Clark, go ahead, and then Dr. Stubblefield, if you have to jump off. There's also a question in the chat, maybe Mr. Lilly can help us out with that or somebody else around building profiles.
I think they'll be finished at the end of February. Ms. Walker has been taking. I think they'll be finished at the end of February. Uh, Ms. Walker has been taking, been supporting that with Ms. Kaiser. Uh, Ms. Walker, will you, do you think we'll have them in some format to share with the board, um, by the 7th, the building needs assessments?
I think the building needs assessments will be ready to go. We did give an extension on getting building budgets done through the first week of March and giving ourselves and the EDS of schools a chance to review those budgets and ask questions.
Ms. Clark, you had a question?
I did. I just want to make sure I'm reading my calendar right. Our meeting, the, the 7th is from 5. It starts at 5. It's an evening meeting.
That's March 11th. March 11th is the listening and learning and that's, uh, 5:30, 5 to 7:30, 5:30 to 7, 5:30 to 7 is the March 11th listening and learning. The March 7th, which is before the 11th, is just a regular special budget meeting that was just on the calendar. Because we moved it up because the, uh, it fell on the week of spring break.
Okay. Okay. But it's in the evening. I want to make sure I have the time right. When I looked at the calendar invite, it looked like it started at 5. I could be wrong.
That was the March 11th meeting. The March 7th meeting is, it says 1 o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then Dr. Win, I see your question around the new org chart. I believe Dr. Stubblefield said at the beginning, towards the beginning of the meeting, I think as we were jumping on, um, that will get sent out to the board in our Friday updates. So, be on the lookout.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or thoughts? Uh, Mr. Lilly and, and Mr. Isnard, thank you for the presentation and for sharing the information. That was really valuable, um, the way it was laid out and presented. So, thanks for, for sharing that. Uh, good questions, good discussion today, board. Any final thoughts? Any final questions?
Uh, Mr. Lopez, when will you have the agenda for next Thursday's meeting, please?
I believe it's going live today at 5 o'clock. Ms. Smith is, uh, finishing up the agenda items. I believe we were getting the, um, the policies, the, the, the last set of policies, um, updated on the agenda and it'll be live today at 5.
Thank you.
No problem. That is a reminder, next board meeting is next Thursday, not Tuesday. So, it should be on your, um, on your calendar for next Thursday. And, uh, yes, Brad, can, can, Mr. Isnard, can you add the Excel document? As well.
Steve's head, yes.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure that's done.
Perfect. It'll look a little prettier by then. Thank you, everybody, for your time today. Really appreciate it. Have a great Friday and a great weekend. See you next week. Meetings adjourned.